Test one, two. So it's.
I will call the Everman City Council regular meeting to order. It is Tuesday, the 11th of 2025, and it's 6:00 PM. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence while I pledge allegiance. Okay, first item agenda is presentations. We have proclamation for Black History Month. Have proclamation declaring February 2025 is Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans and a time for achieving, for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. And whereas the contributions of African Americans to our national political, economical, economic, cultural, and social development has been vast and invaluable, shaping the history and identity of the United States. And whereas the city of Everman acknowledges and honors the struggles, triumphs, and perseverance of African Americans throughout history, recognizing their continued impact on our community and beyond. And whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to reflect on the principles of freedom, justice, and equality upon which our nation was founded, and to reaffirm our commitment to a more inclusive and equitable future for all. And whereas the city of Everman encourages all residents to learn more about the history and culture of African Americans, to participate in events and activities that celebrate their achievements, and to continue fostering a spirit of unity and respect. Be it proclaimed by the city council or the city of Everman, that the Everman City Council does hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in Everman, Texas. The Everman City Council urges members of our community to join in honoring the past, celebrating the present, and working toward a brighter future for all. Next item, citizens' comments.
I don't, we didn't have any sign up. Yeah, you did not have any sign up for citizen comments.
Hello? Let me make an adjustment first. I don't want to yell at you guys. Okay, can everybody hear me now? Okay. Having some technical issues tonight, so. Okay, citizens' comments, we have none. So next item is discussion items. Item A, public hearing discussion and deliberation of garbage, waste, and recycling services for the city of Everman.
You guys take the time for the public hearing?
Oh, that's right. The time is 6:05.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. We are having our first public hearing regarding garbage and recycling. Public hearings on this are not necessarily required. We are seeking a renewal with our current provider, which is Waste Connections. We do have Mr. Abel Moreno here from Waste Connections. He is our district manager. Just to kind of share, and Gilbert, do you mind sharing up on the screen for me so everybody can see? We've got some plans here in place. Tonight is our first discussion and public hearing on the trash and recycling. Our second discussion and public hearing will be at our next city council meeting, which will be February 25th. So after you hear what has to be said tonight, if you would like to come back and share your opinions, if you didn't get the opportunity tonight, you can come back at the next city council meeting and have an opportunity to share your opinion about it then. Then on March 11th, during the regular city council meeting, we'll have a ordinance before you for your consideration. Hopefully by that point, we should have it pretty well nailed down. So that's our timeline here on garbage and waste to try to negotiate an agreement. Our last meeting, the direction from council was to work with Waste Connections to negotiate. We've met with Abel and have put together some, or he's worked to put together some pricing for us. I'm going to let him kind of speak to that pricing. Just to kind of put everybody aware, which we talked about at our last council meeting, we were fearful. We've been very blessed to have a good agreement for a long period of time, and that agreement has withstood a lot of the inflation that we have seen over the last several years, and that agreement is now expiring. So we've been fearful of a, of a, of an increase, a pretty significant increase in trash. And there is somewhat of an increase, but again, I'm going to let Abel kind of talk to that. And in negotiating with him, what we've been trying to find out is what alternatives would be available to us, and he's worked on that and priced that out for you. And we want to make sure that we get as much citizen feedback on this, because one thing that everybody needs to understand is that none of this is funded through general fund. All of the trash contract is billed out to the residents directly. So this has a direct impact on the residents through the water bill. So that's why it's important that we get your feedback. We want to get community buy-in on whatever decisions being made here, and make sure that everybody's well informed. So Abel, do you mind coming up and kind of sharing with us what you've got?
Can you hear me? Hello? My name is, good evening, council, city staff, mayor. My name is Abel Moreno, district manager for Waste Connections. I am responsible for the, the safety and health of 160 employees. We are located out of Holton City, about 17 miles north of Everman. It's really my honor today to get in front of you. I know city staff put together a survey to get out to the residents on how they felt about the current service. I just want to let everybody know, especially the residents, we appreciate the feedback. I can tell you, our employees work very, very hard, very hard workers. By far, we have the best safety record of any company nationwide, statewide. This is proven over and over by DOT and OSHA records. Today, we're here to talk about trash, right? And make no misconception about it. You know, a lot of times, residents feel that there's a certain option that's being pushed, whether that's carts, recycling, take-all trash, what have you. I just want to make everyone, you know, feel comfortable, this is, this is a safe place, we can all voice our opinions. I'm here to help with some of the common misconceptions with carts versus take-all. At the end of the day, we've laid out all options for the city. So we're happy today to talk about those options. Of course, price is a big question and a big, you know, what, what is the price? Where are we going with this? How did we get to this? Well, I will say, as the city manager Craig pointed out, inflation throughout the years, we've had a really good, city staff has done a wonderful job of keeping the rate where it's at with that contract, and it, it is going to increase. And we'll go over there shortly, but I want to talk about the current service that you have, which is take-all. You look at everything going on around us, insurance costs, truck costs. With all that said, you think about the gentleman on the back of these trucks. You know, they, they make around 20, $20, $20, $21 an hour. It's really difficult in this day and age to keep that hourly rate for the gentleman on the back of the truck. It's really hard to hire for that type of position. If you look around, you can deliver pizza for 20 bucks an hour. What would you rather do? Deliver pizza or chunk trash in the back of a truck? Right? And that, that really has a lot to do with the service that you have currently, which is take-all. You've got two, for the majority of the time, you've got two gentlemen on the back of the truck plus a driver. So those costs are going up. You think about the job at hand, you've got a lot of rotator cuff injuries, twisted ankles, there's a lot involved with throwing trash on the back of a truck. And at the end of the day, could lead to injuries, insurance goes up. So when you put all that into it, yes, there's, there's a cost involved with that. Now, are we opposed to, to keeping this service? Absolutely not. If, if the city wants to keep take-all service, we'll, we'll move forward with it. There, there will be a cost associated with that. I do have some handouts, if, if it's okay to.
Yeah, if it's what you sent me, I already printed some off for them.
Perfect.
So perfect.
Perfect, so we're good. So I'll, I'll go through the rates. So currently, your current rate is $17.50. Now, that's residential. I'll focus on residential, and we'll touch on commercial and roll-off at the end. But scenario number one, our proposed rate for the first year would go up to $21.70 for, for the residential rate. On the second year, we would, we would ask for a $23.83 rate on the second year. Every year after that, in a five-year agreement, it would be just simply based on the CPI. And we could talk about maxing and keeping that CPI capped. Scenario two, back to scenario one, that is your current service, your current service level, which is take-all, trash twice a week, and once a week, carted recycling. Scenario number two would be automated side-load, which would be the carts, which I have a cart positioned over here, you can see the size. It would be twice a week, cart pickup. Every resident would receive a cart. In ASL, they would keep their recycling one time per week. This rate would be 18.55. You would also receive, once a month, bulk up to six yards. Scenario number three, yes?
What, you've got REL and ASL on there. Would you tell us what those are, please?
Sure. So ASL is automated side-load. It's basically an automated truck with the arm that would pick up the cart, grab the cart, pick it up, and dispose of it. REL is rear-end loader. That's currently what you have right now for basically your, your service with trash. So you have two guys, two gentlemen on the back of the truck, and you have a driver.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we, it, it's your current service, which bulk is serviced on your second service day. We pick up large objects up to two cubic, two cubic feet.
Real quick, I want to remind council, if you're going to speak, you need to hit your mic. If not, I will stop you, and you will have to repeat yourself. We just want the people out that are watching this on YouTube to hear what's being said.
No, don't worry. Moving down to scenario three, you have twice a week carts, no recycling, with bulk one time a month, and the six yards would apply to that bulk one time a month. Now, why are we putting no recycling as an option? Again, it, it makes no difference whether, what option the city chooses to Waste Connections. I just want to inform some stats. Currently, out of your recycling in the city of Everman, only 50% of the residents recycle. So in other words, on Friday, when you have your recycling, out of your 2,000 residents, only 1,000 of those residents recycle. Out of those 1,000 residents that recycle, you have a 40% contamination rate. In other words, 40% of what's being recycled goes straight to the landfill. Now, that's no fault to a resident that's doing everything right, and, and keeping clean, washing the bottle, water bottles, making sure there's no pizza slices in the pizza box. You know, somebody could be doing everything right, but the next-door neighbor could be throwing any, throwing trash in that recycle bin. What does that do? That contaminates the entire truck. So when we go to the recycling center, and that one resident who put trash in the recycling will contaminate that whole load. So 40% is contaminated out of, out of the city of Everman. 60% is clean, recycled, that, that gets accepted. Are there any questions on that? Moving on to scenario four, this is once a week carts. So this is automated side-load, picking up your trash once a week, and again, with recycling one time a week, which you currently have. And it's got here, I, I, I want to apologize here, this is not correct. Every option is going to be six yards for, for the carts. So it says four yards here, every option is six yards. We want to increase the total yardage on the bulk because, because we're going carted, right? We want to compensate and make sure that we're not taking away that option once a month for the resident. That option is $13.50. It's a substantial decrease. I want to talk about, again, makes no difference what the city chooses, I'm just going to give you some stats. Here in Everman, the average household approximately has 42.37 pounds of trash per home per week. If you look at one of these carts over here, a cart can easily hold five large kitchen bags, 15 pounds apiece. So it can easily hold what this, what the residents put out on a weekly basis, once a week. Now, of course, there's a convenience, right? You get twice a week as opposed to once a week. But from what the stats show here in Everman, really, you've got a lot of residents, put it, to put it in simpler terms, they're purchasing two gallons of milk, but only drinking one, right? So essentially, you're, you're paying for that convenience, which is fine. Going on to scenario five, again, that's ASL, trash, one time per week, carts, no recycling. That, that brings the rate down to $11 a home. So with that, I want to talk about the commercial rates. The commercial rates would have to come up for each of these scenarios, and this would impact the businesses and the roll-off. Right now, your commercial dollar per yard is $4.45 for a business. It would increase to $5.77 for, for each option. And really, what, what that's doing, it's, it's really helping that residential rate. And again, these are, these are soft numbers. If, if council wants to look at things after today's meeting, and we need to go back to the drawing board, you know, maybe, maybe not hit the businesses so much and, and play with the rates, we can do that. These are softened numbers. I haven't been, I haven't, I've submitted for approval with my corporate, but I wanted to leave room for, for negotiations if there's anything we need to change. If residents come up with, they want to add services, if there's anything we need to talk about, I want to leave room for that.
Can you give an example of a yard?
Sure. So let me, let me give you, let me give you an example of two yards. Two yards, two to three yards is typically the back of a pickup truck. An S-10, Ford Ranger, that's just two to three yards.
So how many yards is in one of the commercial trash bins?
Uh, it, they, they range from two to eight yards.
Okay, depending on the size, of course, of, that the business has.
Yes. And if, if council would like, I can bring tables of exactly what businesses are paying today and what they would pay if this gets approved.
Okay.
I have no problem doing that. I can submit that tomorrow in the morning.
Abel, one of the things I wanted to ask about, that I know you've answered for me, but I would love for you to answer here, is we talked about recycling and the impact that recycling has. We know that only, would you say, 60% or 50% of the city recycles? And of that, only 60% of that is actually good recycling, so a small percentage of the recycling is actually being recycled. Is there an option if the city would like to not go with mandated recycling? Is there an option for each resident to opt into a recycling program? So for those that do take recycling serious and do it the right way, they still have a recycling option? And what would that cost be if so?
Yes, sir. So there's a number of things that we can do. We can stage a large roll-off dumpster around the city for residents to put glass, plastics, cardboard, and we could put that at a city-designated area. We could do that at no cost. Or we can ask residents if you really want to recycle. We'd be open to a subscription recycling, which, because we're not blanketing the whole city, we're only going to select residents, it would be at a premium cost. So that cost would be $12 a home. If, if someone were to call Waste Connections and say, hey, I want to keep recycling, how do I do that? We'll sign them up, charge them $12 a month, and they'll, they'll be serviced just like they are today.
Is that on top of?
That, that is on, that is on top of the franchise agreement, yeah.
So the city bin that you mentioned, like picked a spot, and people could put their recycle in there? What would keep people from putting trash in that?
So what some cities have done is they'll have a designated area, they'll secure it, whether it's, you know, round fence, a gate, or cameras next to, uh, what some cities do is they put it right next to the police department. You know, you're not going to see a whole lot of illegal dumping next to the police department. So some cities do that. They put cameras around it and signs notifying residents that, of when the drop-off times are, and, and when they can go ahead and dump their recycling there.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? And, and I will be here, I'm sure the residents have some questions. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Would anybody like to come up and speak about our waste contract?
Can't be bashful now.
Sure.
This green one? Can you hear me?
There we go.
So.
I'm sorry, real quick, can you, can you just state your name, because we'll have to put it in.
My name is Felipe Muniz. A longtime resident here at Everman. So I have a question as, I know that a lot of cities nearby, they do the crane pickup for bulk trash. Is that something that you guys have considered? Because that would help a lot of us residents that do have a lot of stuff sometimes that it, it'd help the community in itself to keep it a lot cleaner, because that's why we have a lot of debris throughout the city. People actually will go dump it off somewhere because they got a lot of big stuff.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, let's, let's find out if there's any other questions, and once we're done with all the questions, I'll get Abel to come up and address that. But yes, we, we have talked about that. That was something that we talked about with Abel about having, and I believe we have that available today. We just have to place a call in order to get that, but. If you would, that'd be great. And if you didn't get it, we'll make sure to put it on the website as well for you, so you have access to it.
Hi. I would just like to.
State your name. I know who you are, but state your name.
I'm Janice Hope, and I've been a resident at Everman for over 50 years. And I just would like to say that I have seen our trash pickup and the guys that work, and they work so hard in the heat, and when it's cold, and they pick up heavy, heavy bags. And I think that they do a great job, and I really appreciate it. And I really get upset with folks that don't put their trash out the correct way, and people that, that cut limbs and stuff and put those out on the curb, and they're supposed to be tied up in bundles, and they expect the, the garbage people to pick that up. And I'd like to see something done by the city to, or code or whatever, to stop people from doing that. But anyways, I just wanted to say a shout out to the guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I appreciate that. Again, Abel Moreno, district manager for Waste Connections. First, I'll answer that first question regarding the bulk. So one of the things we talked about, I have some information, and it's not widely publicized, and that's, that's my fault, we'll do a better job of that. But every resident can utilize the CND landfill for construction and demo debris up to four times a year. City staff had asked me to get numbers. We, it was utilized 58 times in 2024. Which you think about it, you've got 2,000 residents who, or 2,000 homes who could use this, times four, you know, you're, we're missing an opportunity there, which kind of segues into my next comment about, you know, going carts. You, you have an opportunity to save some money potentially with the no recycling option or the once-a-week option. You know, carts, you can fit a lot in those carts, you've got the opportunities to go to the landfill four times a year. We can increase, right now, you, you're limited to two yards, we can increase that to six yards per, per stop, per time you go to the landfill. So on top of that, we speak about the great job these guys do on the back of trucks that, no question, these, these gentlemen, these ladies on the back of the truck, they're, they're few and far between. I want to make, make it clear that should the city go carted, not one employee will lose their job because of this. Really, what it's going to, really what we're looking at is just not replacing employees that leave us. Employees will leave for various reasons, injuries, they get better jobs, right? We don't want to hold them back. But nobody is going to lose their job should we go to carts. We'll simply not backfill when employees leave us. Also, we've got 14 municipalities in Tarrant County that use our service, Tarrant County and Johnson County, and we've got numerous opportunities to, to move helpers around that are on the back of these trucks. So just making that clear.
Abel, before you step away, so one of the questions was about the claw truck, the ability to have a claw truck available, come down for special bulk pickups, things like furniture, couches, those kinds of things. What's the availability for that?
We, we could do that, we could make it a subscription, a subscription where the resident could call us, and we would go out. I'm thinking $35 a yard for that, which, I mean, if you've got, if you, if you've got a couch, you're paying, I mean, really, I, I, we would have to look at the pricing, but I would, I would think around 35 to 50 max, depending on how much is set out. $50 would be the max, I don't want to go over that. We want to, we want to remain a good partner, so.
In the contract, will there be, be any of the, um, on several occasions, uh, you've picked up at Johnson Park for the residents, like on a Saturday, would those be included in any of these prices?
So we, we, with these prices, we can keep everything the way they are. The, the cleanups that you're talking about, twice a year, they can be twice a year, they can be once a year. Uh, we're, we're working with the city with that. It really doesn't move the needle that much on the pricing if you take away that, that service. So we can keep them whatever the city wishes.
Would anybody else like to speak in our audience? Okay, council?
Mayor, while we're, while we're on this topic, because we have two weeks before we come back for our second public hearing, I sure would like to hear from council or if anybody from the public, just kind of some guidance on which path maybe you guys are leaning towards, so we can kind of work on finalizing some options to bring back. Because again, we're going to have a second public hearing, um, at our second meeting this month, and then the first meeting in March is when we're going to have hopefully a, a final ordinance for your consideration to adopt. So, um, I just want to make sure that staff, we don't waste the next couple of weeks and we have some guidance on how you're feeling about what Abel's presented tonight.
Well, can I ask the audience about certain things? Just like, if those might be interested in recycling. Okay. I was just trying to get some hand raises. It's really hard to give you an opinion until we hear from you.
Well, let me, let me share this. If you recall, we did a survey, um, and we would encourage, if you have not gone onto our website and looked at the survey, completed the survey, do that. Uh, we do have a survey that's still available online that we've collected a lot of feedback from. Uh, we garnered almost three hundred responses on that survey. The overwhelming majority of the survey indicated that they want to keep two-time-a-week pickup. Um, there was indication kind of on the fence regarding recycling. We had some that expressed a, a, um, pretty resounding, they were, they wanted to keep recycling, but, uh, again, another fifty percent, pretty reflective of what it looks like our recycling service is. The other fifty percent didn't really express too much interest in, in maintaining recycling. So that's something to look at. Uh, if it, if it was me to consider this, I think the overwhelming majority of the population was indicating they wanted to keep two-time-a-week pickup. Um, there was some heartburn over carts. My hope is that maybe Abel has, has provided some education there. Um, and then I think what council just has to weigh is, is the cost and the impact. Um, you know, to maintain our current service as it is today, year one, we're going to go up from seventeen dollars and fifty cents to twenty-one dollars and seventy cents. That's a pretty significant jump, um, per month. And then year-two rate would be twenty-three eighty-three. So we're talking, what is that? Almost seven dollars in two years per month to the residents. So that's a, that's a pretty significant jump above and beyond to keep exactly how it is today. I think personally, if, if council is looking and the, and the public is looking to get a break on cost, then I think carts is the way to go. Um, Abel was kind enough when we talked about carts, because I think the biggest fear was is because having that take-all service is really nice. Um, it's great when you have a party, uh, Christmas comes around, you have an excess amount of trash to be able to put out however much you need to and get that picked up. Abel was kind enough to work it into where we still have that at least once a month. So I think maintaining that will help, um, those residents that have an excess amount of trash. But again, the average being forty-three, forty-three pounds per week, is that what it was? Forty-three pounds per week? Um, I, I just think it's something to consider that everybody's paying an excessive amount for very few that have excessive amounts of trash. So just a couple of things to kind of consider there. Granted, that's just my opinion, but.
Which scenario were you just describing?
Um, that would either be scenario two, which would be trash two times a week with recycling one time a week and bulk one time a month, which would be an increase of one dollar and five cents per month. So we'd be going from seventeen fifty to eighteen fifty-five. Or if you chose to eliminate recycling, then residents would actually see a one-dollar reduction.
For scenario three?
For scenario three, going from seventeen fifty to sixteen fifty with carts two times a week, no recycling. But again, making some of those other options available if we needed to, whether it be a local recycling pickup that he mentioned would be at no cost, we could, we could work that out with Waste Connections or offering a subscription service to the residents.
I ju- I just want to add, I know, I know also with carts, there's always, you know, what about the handicap? What about the elderly? Well, keep in mind, we, we will make exceptions, and what we do is offer a backdoor service for those residents that qualify and are handicapped or too elderly to move the carts. We will require that our drivers walk up to the driveway, to the porch, pull the cart to the, to the, to the yard, to the curb, and get serviced. So there are exceptions for that. Also, during Christmas, during New Years, we're going to have to allow residents to put access outside of the cart, up to four to six bags, because we know how the holidays get. Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years, you're going to have a lot, abundance of trash. You know, it would be, you know, for us to expect everyone to just limit to the cart, uh, would be unreasonable. So during those times, we would allow bags outside the cart, up to six bags. Also, there, there are neighboring cities that, that do fines if the lid is cracked. We're, we're not going to do fines. We're not going to fine residents for not having the lid shut all the way. We use a common sense approach to where we're going to, we're going to ask residents to make sure, and, and we'll tag their carts, say, hey, you left your cart open. If we dump your trash with your cart open, the trash is going to spill. So they'll get a tag, they'll get educated, and, and we'll still service them, but just make sure they know how to do it next time. Now, if it continues, we'll, we'll work with the city on suspending service or whatnot if it continues.
Okay, now everyone will be provided a cart, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now what if you don't want to pull out the cart? Some people just sit out trash bags.
So, so we, everyone's going to have a cart with the cart service. For the once-a-month bulk, one time a month, they will be allowed to put outside of the cart up to six yards, one time a month. And, and of course, the exceptions that I just spoke about, handicap, elderly, or during the holidays.
Abel, uh, if we have a house that people have an incredible amount of trash, would they have the option of subscribing for a second container?
Yes, sir. So a second container would be seven dollars for a second cart.
Sorry, is that per month?
Per month, per month.
Any other questions or comments?
I feel that, um, if only fifty percent of the city recycles, I think it would be best to have a recycling bin instead of putting that out to everybody. Costs are going up everywhere. So I'm proposing scenario number three.
I agree. If we're not using the, and I'm a big recycler, I make sure my trash is clean, my recycle is clean, no pizza in the box, all of that. I, I honestly believe in that. But if, as a whole, the city is not using it, it seems like we're charging people for a service we're not using, and as you say, everything is going up. So I think scenario number three might be our best bet.
Let's save money.
Cost-wise, yeah.
Well, then, like you said, the residents can subscribe to recycling if they wish to continue doing so.
So Mayor, what I would, what I would say is I would encourage residents between now and the next meeting to contact the city, let us know your opinion, um, go online, fill out that survey, plan to be in attendance at our next city council meeting, which is on February twenty-fifth. We'll have a second discussion and second public hearing on this. Uh, would love to hear the feedback from everybody on what it is you're wanting. I think council would love to hear the feedback from, from the citizens on what it is you're wanting, because this does directly impact you. But please take advantage of those options before we come back on March eleventh to propose a final, final ordinance. So just so I've got some, some good direction from council, it sounds like the consensus is pretty well aligned with maintaining two times a week pickup. Is that?
Yes.
Just some head nods kind of a thing, two times a week pickup for trash?
Maybe, yes. The only reason why I hesitate on this a little bit is because I, uh, I'm aware of some of the bigger cities are going to one pickup a week. So I don't know how it compares with us.
So going to one pickup per week by the numbers, um, Abel has expressed that one of those carts will hold the average household cons- uh, trash amount for, for our residents today. Um, it would reduce it, if we were to go away from recycling and go down to one cart pickup per week, it would provide a dramatic reduction to eleven dollars per month versus our current seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Keeping recycling?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, if you were to keep recycling, that's still a reduction of four dollars per month.
Right.
Going from seventeen fifty to thirteen fifty.
But I'm just, I've heard some of the bigger cities now are going to one pickup a week, so I don't know.
I'm sorry? Oh, can you talk a little closer in your mic?
Sorry, yeah. I said, I have heard some of the bigger cities now are going to one pickup a week. I don't know how it would work with us as far as our city goes, but something to think about, too.
My thought on once a week is, I know probably three dozen people, that's not a whole lot, but about three dozen people in Cleburne, and they've been one pickup a week for quite a while, and most of these people that I know hate the once a week.
The one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's just something on that. Uh, they have never liked it.
Okay.
Just a thought. But anyway, yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Oh, what, uh? Can you come up to the mic, please? Sorry about that. Please state your name, and we all know who you are, but please state your name.
Judy Greason, like that. So does that mean now that if you change to one of these, that we would have to take that, all the trash would go in the cart and we would take it out either once or twice a week? Because I don't even do that right now. I mean, when you're living alone, you don't have that much trash.
Right.
And I take my little white thing out there twice a week, and half the time they're not, but halfway full. So, sorry, to take that cart out there when there's hardly anything in it, seems like that we don't really need to do that, if you're not going to take the plastic bags anymore. I guess that's my thought.
Well, you could take your cart down there when it was full. You don't have to put it out twice a week or even once a week.
Yeah, but if you leave stuff in that cart and it sits there in a hundred-degree weather for two weeks or something, that's going to get kind of smelly after a while.
Yes, ma'am, I got to say that.
Well, Ms. Greason, too, we, we know you have mobility issues, and you can get with Abram and them, and they can come get your trash and beside your house, and you don't even have to mess with it.
Well, I guess I could do that, yeah. I know some people who do.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to have to take that cart out there when there's hardly anything in it.
I, I'm kind of that way with my recycling. If it's not full, I typically wait till the following week if I can, so.
Well, I do do the recycling, but I don't do it every, I do it when the thing is at least halfway full, like that. I don't take it out there, but when I need to, that's all. So that's all I, because I kind of like my plastic bag.
So do we have anything else?
Is there any way we can get a, um, a list of, um, senior citizens that would need help to?
Well, I'm assuming Abel already has, they have a list of a lot of our senior citizens that need help now, so.
Okay.
I'll leave that to just add to it, so. Would you please state your name again?
It's Janice Hope again. Um, I, I did want to comment about the carts. Right now, it seems like there's an issue about people leaving their recycle carts out in the yards, and they stay out in the street for a day, and there, they get to be a real eyesore, and I'm thinking, and they don't put them in the backyard or whatever, like we're supposed to, behind the fence or whatever. And if they get the garbage carts too, I'm worried about what it's going to do about people leaving their carts laying around everywhere in the yard or leaving them out on the street. And people don't follow code, that's going to, that just makes the neighborhood look ugly. So I wanted to just say that. And I have a real hard time, and my husband does too, putting our recycle cart out there, but we don't put it out, but like every other Friday. But I would hate to have to, to pull a, a big cart, I mean, it's a lot easier just to pull a black bag out to the street. It's, it, and it's gone. There's not anything to have to put back and get out of the street. So that's my two cents on that.
With problems, uh, regarding pickup, do we call Waste Management or do we call the city? Because some, some residents have been confused on that.
I mean, we, we always instruct everybody to call Waste Connections directly. We provide them that phone number every time they, they call up to our city hall.
Okay, if we don't have any more comments, then we're done with it. Okay, I will close the public hearing. The time is six forty-seven. Next item on the agenda is presentation of the Everman Police Department 2024 Racial Profiling Report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In accordance with Texas state law, we are required to supply you with a copy of our racial profiling report, the City of Everman Police Department contracts with Dr. Alex Del Carmen and Del Carmen Consulting. Dr. Alex Del Carmen is the state expert in racial profiling. As a matter of fact, he is the one who helped write the Sandra Bland Act in which we're required to comply with. So we consult with him to conduct our quarterly audit reports on our citations and to conduct the, uh, analysis of the racial profiling report. Dr. Del Carmen did submit a copy of his, uh, report back to you. That is contained in your packet. I know it is a very, very lengthy report. Um, where am I? So on page thirty, I'm just going to bring you to the, to kind of the main line of that report. On page thirty of your council packet, his findings indicate that the comprehensive data analysis performed serves as evidence that the Everman Police Department has complied with the Texas Racial Profiling Law and all of its requirements. Further, the report demonstrates that the police department has incorporated a comprehensive racial profiling policy, currently offers information to the public on how to file a complaint or a complaint, commissions quarterly data audits in order to ensure validity and reliability, collects and commissions the analysis of tier-two data, and ensures the practice of racial profiling will not be accepted or tolerated. So we have a good finding on our report. Um, consultant is very happy with our report and our data. Uh, following tonight's meeting, this report will be made public on the city's website, as well as submission to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, all of which is required by state law. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the report.
Okay, seeing none, then we'll move down to the next item. We'll move down to the next item. Item C, receive report from the Charter Review Commission on proposed charter amendments for consideration during the May 2025 general election cycle.
All right. We do have here with us this evening, we've got several commissioners that were served as a part of the Charter Review Commission. They've worked very hard over the past couple of months, kind of going through the entire charter in length and in depth, asking a lot of questions and proposing a lot of thoughts and ideas. As a result, the Charter Commission has prepared five proposed amendments to the City of Everman Charter. We do have Ms. Judith Graham here this evening. She is the Charter Review Commission President.
And Judy Greason, and she's involved in a couple of the old years that we've been able to thank you all.
Perfect. And they worked really hard. So we're going to kind of go through these changes and some of the rationale for you real quick. And then if you have any questions or would like to talk, Ms. Judith Graham is here to answer any questions from the Charter Review Commission for you. First proposed amendment is in Article 3, the City Council, Section 3.02, which talks about the compensation and expense reimbursement for council. As discussed within the Charter Review Commission, they pretty much unanimously expressed that they feel the duties and commitments and responsibilities of the mayor and the city council members warrant an increase in compensation for their valuable time, expense, and work. Additionally, the Charter Review Commission feels that the mayor and council member should be compensated on a monthly basis rather than on a meeting basis, providing for a more stable budgeting opportunity. The current budget impact is $13,200 a year. Approval of this amendment would result in a budget impact of $31,200 a year or an increase of $18,000 a year. Essentially, the proposal is that as monthly compensation, the mayor will receive a sum of $800 per month, which was previously $500 per month, and council shall receive the sum of $300 per month as opposed to $200 per month previously. I'm sorry, $100 per month previously. I think I'll stop there and pause for a second and let you ask any questions before I go through all five of these, and we have to bounce back and forth on them. So I'll pause there and...
What was the increase?
I would let, I would let Ms. Judith Graham answer that. Gilbert, I'm sorry to bug you. Can I get you to take a microphone to Ms. Judith Graham? Sorry.
The reasoning behind this is because sometimes they have more than two meetings a month, and if they have another meeting, then we pay another fee because it has been on a per-meeting basis instead of a monthly basis. Also, you know, inflation, whatever. But they commit much more time to city business than just coming to a couple of meetings. And, you know, I know for a fact that our mayor is in City Hall every day and has lots of other responsibilities besides just taking care of local city business. And so, you know, it's not like we're paying them a salary of $1,000 a month or $50,000 a year like some cities do. You know, it's still very, very, a very, very conservative rate. So, anyway. Does that help explain it, or am I just confusing you?
Multiple meetings, we only have...
I can't hear you.
We only have two meetings a month.
I know, but sometimes you have called meetings and things and called...
During the Charter Review Commission meetings, one of the things the commissioners asked was about the responsibilities of council members. And we talked about how throughout the year, the responsibilities certainly increase and decrease. For example, during budget season, we have meetings every week for a couple of months straight, and there's a lot of work that goes into that.
Exactly.
So they were taking a lot of that into consideration. Asking a lot about the responsibilities on various other committees, other boards, other commissions. So it was their desire to want to provide an increase, since the last increase hadn't been provided since 2020.
We did compare some other cities and what they paid. I mean, I got on the internet and looked at what a lot of other small cities paid. And we really have underpaid our board a lot for a long time. So, anyway, that's the logic, logic behind all this, okay?
You have any other questions on Section 302 or comments?
Increase of $18,000 a year?
Yes, ma'am. This would have a budget impact of $18,000. Now, this impact would not be $18,000 to this fiscal year. Bear in mind, what you would be asked later to do tonight is to pass an ordinance calling for an election. That election would not take place until May. If this was to go into effect in May, then it would only be the remaining portion of this fiscal year. I don't think it will have a, it's not going to have a huge budget impact on this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, we will have to increase that allocation to a total of $31,200 for compensation for council, which is an $18,000 increase over prior year. Any other questions or comments?
Also, our city manager assured us that our city, because of our factory and income, you know, that we can, it's not going to be a big sacrifice to our residents. So, you know, we might be just going to...
Next recommendation was in Article 3, the City Council, Section 3.08. This one was actually initiated by the City Attorney's Office, which the Charter Review Commission agreed to. It's pretty much in a mimic stating that special meetings may be called by the city secretary on written request of the mayor or any three city council members. All city council meetings shall be held at City Hall or at other such place that will permit the attendance of the general public. Essentially, the rationale is, and of course, I could let Victoria speak for herself, too, but rationale is currently the way the charter is written, is any city council member has the opportunity to call for a special meeting. The calling of special meetings can be expensive, as you're going to be paying for staff time and so forth. And so to prevent that from being abused, although it's not, it has not been and currently isn't, we have to think about the future to prevent that from being abused and costing the city unnecessarily, unnecessary dollars, mending that to require three council members to call for a special meeting.
And this, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and that this is in line with other cities. I honestly don't know of a single city that allows a single council member to call a meeting.
And what was I going to say? Special meeting, went right out of my head, never mind. That's okay. I may think of it again.
Three members?
Three, no. No. Thank you. I'll work on it.
Any questions on this proposal? All right. Next one. Yes, ma'am.
This does, this does not pertain to a specific issue a council member may want to discuss on an agenda. Okay, this is a special call meeting. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
All right. Yeah, we can't. But get with me after if you want to stick around, and we'll answer it, I promise you. Next one is a proposal to amend Article 4 Municipal Election Qualifications for Candidacy. Again, this is another attorney-initiated recommendation that essentially brings the language in line with what state law currently is. There's been some fairly recent changes in state law that provides that a person is eligible for a place on the ballot and thus hold office if elected. If that person has not been finally convicted of a felony from which the person has not been pardoned or otherwise released from the resulting disabilities. Therefore, the language, the proposed language here is to bring the charter in line with current state law. Any questions there? Okay. Move on to the next one. This is actually Article 8. My slideshow says 4. Apologies. But it's Article 8 Boards and Commissions. Proposition D, qualifications for city boards and commission members, pretty much changing the language to read, "The term of office for a member shall not exceed two years from the date of appointment. There are no term limits. Qualified members can be removed from reappoint, or reappointed at the city council's discretion anytime." Essentially, there was, this is another attorney-initiated recommendation, but there was a missing word previously in the charter. This cleans it up and makes it a little bit more understandable. So not, not much substantial change here, just makes it clear. Any questions there? All right. And then last, no officer or employee to accept gifts. This is Section 12 under General Provisions, Proposition E. The proposal is to increase the amount from $25 to $50. So it reads, "No officer, employee of the City of Everman shall ever accept directly or indirectly any gift, favor, privilege, or employment valued at $50 or more from any firm, individual, or corporation doing business or proposing to do business with the City of Everman, excluding cash, gift cards, and negotiable instruments, which cannot be accepted regardless of any value." The purpose of this amendment pretty much brings it in line with what state law currently says. It keeps it in line with what state law currently says. Has nothing to do with wanting to increase how much we get. But there are oftentimes token things when you go to conferences and stuff. This allows it to stay in line with that and in line with state law. Any questions there? All right. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you to discuss or deliberate on it as you wish. This will come up underneath consideration and possible action. It is listed as a ordinance number 82... 828.
Okay, so I'll open the floor to council. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Or as far as the charter changes go?
On Exhibit A, under Section 3.08, meeting of the council, it used to be two city council members, and it's changed to three?
Ma'am, I think, I think you might be confusing the council rules and regulations with the city charter. The council rules and regulations do allow for two city council members to place items. It requires two city council members in order to place an item on the agenda, or the mayor. But that's placing items on the agenda. We're talking specifically about the charter and calling of a special meeting. Currently, the charter allows for one council member to call for a special meeting.
Okay. The next question under Section 4.05. It says, "Any person who is not compliant with any city codes." What city codes are you referring to?
Yes. So if you recall during the, I was trying to pull up the document, so I had it in front of me. But if you recall during the previous charter amendments, that was a prior charter amendment from 2020 that required all board, commission members to be compliant with all city code regulations, also not be indebted to the city, meaning that they owe water or back taxes of any kind. So it required them to be compliant with all city codes and ordinances. That could be many different things. It could mean the grass has to be cut in compliance with the code and have to pull permits. I mean, there's a lot to encapsulate that, but as long as they're compliant with all city codes, they're eligible.
So what do you need, mayor?
I'll just, it's open for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Do we have anything else? Anybody like to discuss?
I think the five items are well thought out, and I appreciate the committee's hard work you've put into all of this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the committee for their time and effort. So I know I told Judy it'd probably be three or four meetings. It sounded like it might have been a few more, I'm not sure. But I appreciate your time and your efforts, so.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we'll drop down to Item D. Discuss and deliberate on the potential abandonment of certain right-of-way located at 100 block of Royce Brooks Boulevard for the purposes of developments.
All right. We are currently working with the City Attorney's Office and City Engineers' Office. I wanted to bring this before you tonight, simply as a discussion item and to make you aware and try to address any questions you may have before we bring this back, hopefully by the next meeting, with an ordinance to abandon, a proposed ordinance to abandon a right-of-way. If you are not aware, Advanced Castone has acquired the old Back Supply Company that is located on Enon Avenue and Royce Brooks. They are currently working on expanding their operations to that building. They have a need and a desire to expand their lot on the side, that they want to provide some improved fencing around to keep their materials and items out of sight, keep it secure. But they're, they're needing a few more feet, essentially, to get what, exactly what they need. So they approached the city and had asked about potentially abandoning a portion of that right-of-way and granting that right-of-way over to them so that they can expand their property and move forward with this improvement. Gilbert, can you throw my slide up on the screen so council can see? Currently, Royce Brooks is, currently has a 60-foot right-of-way that is needed here in accordance with our master thoroughfare plan, which says that it would be a three-lane road at full build-out, meaning that if we were to ever go in and expand, it could not be any wider than three lanes. So that would require a 60-foot right-of-way. That would alleviate a pretty good amount of area here that we could abandon and turn over to Advanced Castone without any concern of it having a negative impact on future roadway expansion. Couple of things have to happen here that are, that are happening right now. We're waiting on the City Engineers' Office to draft the final exhibit that will have the surveys conducted on there. We're also waiting on a response from utility companies to concur with that abandonment, making sure that they don't have any right-aways. We don't see any on record, but we're still requiring them to, to supply a letter saying that they have no objection to the abandonment of our right-of-way here, if for whatever reason they wanted to come in and put in a gas line, water line, utility line, something along those lines. So, once those two things happen, which we're hopeful will happen by next week, then we would plan to bring this back to you at the next council meeting, hopefully with an ordinance and an exhibit with a recommendation of approval. Happy to answer any questions on this if you have any.
So you're leaving enough space to build a three-lane just in case we need to later on in the future?
That is correct.
And then sell to them?
Not sell. We would be abandoning a right-of-way. So when we abandon a right-of-way by right, that property goes immediately to the adjacent property owner. Does that make sense? We're not selling.
So you're giving it to them, pretty much.
Abandon, abandoning. I want to, I want to make sure I'm good with my terms. We are abandoning. We're not giving anything. We are...
Yes.
We abandon our right-of-way, then they just...
Okay. Well, y'all are nice.
They remove the restrictions that are on it.
Right.
Right.
But if there is utilities, they will pay to move them, not the city?
No. So if there are utilities or there are objections to the utility, we may not be able to abandon the right-of-way. That would prohibit us from being able to abandon the right-of-way. So we have to have what's called a letter of no objection from the utility companies here, saying that they have no issue with us abandoning their right-of-way. Essentially, what has happened is the city had come in at one point, established a right-of-way here, and now we have a right-of-way that any utilities can use, the city can use, and has prohibited the landowner from being able to build on this right-of-way. We're looking at this saying, hey, we would never need more than 60 feet. As long as other utility companies say, hey, they would never need more than 60 feet, we can come in here and agree to say, hey, we're going to abandon this portion of that right-of-way, which allows the property owner, which is Advanced Castone, to build on this portion of that.
How many feet is that?
I believe it's 15 feet. It's not much.
Not much.
No.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll drop down to consideration of possible action. Item A, consider approval authorizing the mayor and the president of the Planning and Zoning Commission to attend the Focus North Texas 2025 Conference scheduled for February 21st, 2025, at the Weston Galleria in Dallas, Texas, in accordance with the City of Everman City Council Boards, Commissions, and Committees Rules and Procedures, Article 10 Training. I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I make the motion to approve the mayor and the president of the Planning and Zoning Commission to attend the Focus North Texas 2025 Conference scheduled for February 21st, 2025.
I second.
Mr. Biden, second. Any discussion? Do you have anything to add, Curtis?
No, I did include a staff report that indicated that I originally had planned to attend this, but I've got other commitments, City Manager Training, that I have to attend. This is a great training opportunity that I think both the mayor, as the mayor and our president of the EDC, as well as our Planning and Zoning President, which I don't know if he's here or not tonight. I think it's a great opportunity for them to attend because our council rules and regulations state that any training outside of TML or our City Attorney's Office has to be approved by council. That's why it's a council action tonight.
Any other discussion? Can you call the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
And I will abstain. So motion carries. Next item, Item B, discuss, deliberate, and consider the acquisition of audiovisual modular furniture from standsandmounts.com in the amount of up to $8,705 for meetings of the city council, boards, committees, and commissions. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the acquisition of audiovisual modular furniture from standardsandmounts.com in the amount of up to $8,705 for meetings of the city council boards, committees, and commissions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Was this budgeted? What budget are you pulling... what department are you pulling this from?
So this was not a specifically budgeted item, but there is funding available within two funds. The city council budget currently has $5,000 available in minor equipment, and the Civic Center minor equipment budget currently has $12,000 available in it. Our proposal would be to use one or two of those. We've got a couple of different options here. The amount that is on the agenda is for up to $8,705. That's if the council was to approve to get... if you want to go with five tables, we can get five. We could also downsize that by one. These tables are about $1,700 apiece. The reason why they're so expensive is because they are collapsible tables, they're more sturdy. For those of you that can't tell, these are just standard six-foot folding tables that come from Academy. They are kind of a pain for our public works staff to set up every time we have a meeting. They have to bring them out, unfold them, put them all together, run the cables every which way. It just kind of becomes pretty labor-intensive. It takes them several hours to set up for a council meeting each time. These tables, which if you haven't had a chance... Gilbert, will you show my PowerPoint if it's up? These tables collapse, they're on wheels, they connect together. It'll allow them to simply roll these out, unfold it, set it up, and it's done. It allows for an easier setup for our staff. It also gets rid of these void spaces we have between each one of the tables, allowing us to not have to scream at each other from across the room, bringing us a little closer together, which I know has been a kind of a pinch point for council meetings. And it provides power on top of the tables, which if you're using a laptop and you have to plug in and you're like me, I've got to crawl underneath the table every time I need to plug something in. So it just adds for some convenience and a more professional look and easier for staff to set up each time we have a council meeting. There is funding available within an already approved budget, but again, it's completely up to you. The setup that you see here in the demonstration is four tables. That accommodates 11 seats, which is about what we have right now set up. So we can go with four or we can go with five. It's kind of up to you.
Well, five would include spot for...
Five would allow for staff like our fire chief, police chief, public works director when they're here. It would allow them a seat as well. Otherwise, they would have to use the podium. And then you also have your options and colors too, so we can customize the color as well.
I think we should consider five tables. Staff is a part of this. I just... I think they should be up here with us. Not pink. Just saying.
As far as color goes, I think we'd leave that up to you if we approve it.
Yeah, something professional, yes. Not pink.
So we have any other discussion?
Yep, looks good.
Okay, seeing none, would you call the council? Oh, wait a minute. You need to know how many tables it is, right?
You're approving it for up to 8,705, then that's five tables.
Okay. All right, we call the council.
Does that include chairs?
No, ma'am, it would be the same chairs right now. This is just for the tables. Yes, ma'am.
Now would you call the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Next item, staff report, Frost Bank Home Events.
And I apologize, this was an agenda error. This should have been up under discussion. There's no action required on this one. This was my fault. I just wanted to make council aware that we are currently working with Frost Bank, which is the bank for the city. Ms. Helgeson and I just met with them last week regarding hosting a home event here at the Civic Center, which would be a free event. We would encourage residents to come up. It gives them an opportunity to come up and learn about home improvement options, financing options, lots of opportunities, not just bank-related. They're not trying to sell you anything. It's just a great educational opportunity for residents to come up. They can hear directly from code enforcement, they can get tips and tricks on how to maintain their home, just lots of fun opportunities for them. So we are looking to host this in... I didn't put it on the calendar. It's in May. I thought it was on my staff report and it's not. Hang on. It is not on the calendar here either. Yes, it is, May 17th. So May 17th, we're looking to host that event here in partnership with them. They are hosting a very similar event to that right now in Fort Worth. What you have in your packet is a sample flyer from that event that talks about what they're looking to do and just some different options. It's just about public engagement. There's no selling, there's nothing along with that. Talks a lot about home safety, repair programs, security, those kinds of things. So it's just a great networking opportunity for homeowners in our community.
Okay, we'll drop down to Item D, ordinance number 826, an ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances by repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter III titled Animals and Animal Control Regulations, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, and providing for an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve ordinance number 826 as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
This has already been approved. This is an identical ordinance that was presented to the City of Forest Hill, already been voted and approved on by them. Our animal shelter manager, Ray Rensler, is here, so if you have any questions, he'd be more than happy to come up and answer them.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Call the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Item E, ordinance number 827, ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Amendment A titled Fee Schedule by adding a new section entitled Municipal Animal Services Fees, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, and providing for an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance number 827 as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? See anything? We're good? Seeing none, would you call the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Item F, ordinance number 828, an ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas authorizing and calling for the May 3rd, 2025, special municipal election for the purpose of considering proposed amendments to the home rules city charter of the City of Everman, Texas, authorizing a joint election with other Tarrant County political subdivisions, authorizing a contract for election services with Tarrant County, providing a runoff date and providing an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance number 828 as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Call the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, Mayor, on this next item, we have had... we've had to revise this ordinance, and the revision has to do with an election service, so therefore, based on the attorney's recommendation, we are going to need to read the entire ordinance into the record. So if you need a break, this would be the time. If you give me a few minutes, I am going to have to read this entire ordinance into the record before we entertain a motion because we have a revision on it.
Go for it.
All right. All right. City of Ever... I'm sorry, I'm already messing it up. City of Everman, ordinance number 829, an ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas authorizing and calling for the May 3rd, 2025, special municipal election for the purpose of placing before the voters of the City of Everman a proposition to vote for or against reauthorizing a local sales tax and use tax, local sales and use tax, to provide revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets, authorizing a joint election with other Tarrant County political subdivisions, authorizing a contract for election services with Tarrant County, providing a runoff date, providing an effective date. Whereas on May 1st, 2021, pursuant to Chapter 3327 of the Texas Tax Code, the voters of the City of Everman approved a proposition authorizing the extension of the collection of a local sales and use tax for the purpose of providing revenue and for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets, the street maintenance sales tax. And whereas, in accordance with Texas Tax Code, Section 327.007, the street maintenance sales tax will expire on May 1st, 2025 unless an election is held to reauthorize the street maintenance sales tax. And whereas, the city council of the City of Everman, Texas finds it to be in the public interest to place before the qualified voters of the city a proposition to vote for or against reauthorization of the street maintenance sales tax for a period of four years. And whereas, in accordance with Section 271.002 of the Texas Election Code, said special election will be conducted jointly with other political subdivisions of Tarrant County, Texas, on the uniform election date of May 3rd, 2025. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Everman, Texas that, Section 1, a special election is hereby ordered to be held on the third day of May 2025 for the purpose of placing before the qualified voters of the City of Everman the following proposition upon which said voters shall vote for or against. Proposition 1, the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the City of Everman at the rate of one-half of 1% to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets. The tax expires on the fourth anniversary of this election unless the imposition of the tax is reauthorized. Markings for for or against. Section 2, the special election is hereby ordered to be held May 3rd, 2025 for the herein above stated proposition to be submitted to the qualified voters of the city for their approval or disapproval. Such election shall be held at the City of Everman Daggs Building, 100 North Ray Street, Everman, Texas, on the third day of May 2025 from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. The election will be conducted jointly with other political subdivisions in Tarrant County on May 3rd, 2025 pursuant to Chapter 31 and 271, Texas Election Code, and joint election agreement and election services contract by and between the City of Everman, Tarrant County, and other political subdivisions, also known as the Joint Elections Agreement. Section 4, the election precinct and polling place of said election shall be as follows: City Voting Precinct, City of Everman Daggs Building, 100 North Ray Street, Everman, Texas. Election polls shall be open on Election Day at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. Section 5, the following provisions apply to early voting. A, early voting by personal appearance. Early voting by personal appearance will be held jointly with the Tarrant County public entities at the Tarrant County main early voting sites beginning Monday, April 22nd, 2025, and continuing through Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, at the locations and times set forth below. Main early voting polling sites, Forest Hill Civic Center, 2901 Wichita Street, Forest Hill, Texas, 76140. Dates and times for early voting by personal appearance. Early voting hours shall be Monday, April 22nd, 2025, through Friday, April 25th, 2025, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, April 26th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Sunday, April 27th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday, April 28th, 2025, through Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. B, early voting by mail. The Tarrant County Elections Administrator is hereby designated as the early voting clerk for the special election. Applications for early voting by mail may be delivered to the Elections Administrator at the following address. Mailing address, Tarrant County Elections, P.O. Box 961011, Fort Worth, Texas, 76161-0011. Express courier delivery, Tarrant County Elections, 2700 Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, 76111-3011. Phone number, 817-831-8683. Fax number, 817-850-2344. Email is votebymail@terrentcountytexas... I'm sorry. Applications for ballots by mail must be received no later than the close of business on April 22nd, 2025 by 5:00 p.m. Federal postcard applications must be received no later than close of business on April 22nd, 2025 by 5:00 p.m. C, early voting, both by personal appearance and by mail, shall be canvassed by the early voting ballot board established by Tarrant County under the terms of the Joint Elections Agreement and Section 87.001 of the Texas Elections Code. Section 6, appointment of election judge and alternate election judge. The presiding and alternate presiding judge shall be appointed by Tarrant County as authorized by Chapter 271 of the Election Code. Section 7, the election shall be held in accordance with the Constitution of the State of Texas and the Election Code, and all resident qualified voters of the city shall be eligible to vote at the election. Section 8, the city manager is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a contract for the joint election and election services with Tarrant County. Section 9, the city secretary is hereby authorized and directed to file, publish, and/or post, in a time and manner prescribed by law, all notices required to be so filed, published, and/or posted in connection with this election. Section 10, this ordinance is effective from and after its passage and approval as may be required by law by the city charter or by ordinance, passed, approved, and adopted by the city council of the City of Everman, Texas, City of Everman, Tarrant County, Texas, this 11th day of February 2025. Is that good?
That was great.
I will entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve ordinance number 829 as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I was going to ask you to read it again.
Can you elaborate on the sales tax? Is it... was this the half percent, half of 1%? Is that a normal? And has it been done in the previous years? Is what...
Yes. So essentially, the state of Texas assesses a 6.25% sales tax. The cities have the option... is it 6.25 or 6?
No, it's 6.25.
6.25.
I read it.
Municipalities have the option to assess an additional 2% above and beyond that in various categories. The City of Everman has elected to assess that in three categories historically: Economic Development Commission, Crime Control District, and the Street Maintenance Tax, which is before you today. Each one varying percentages. The city has the ability to flex those however needed. This is in line with what has been done historically. It generates an average revenue of about $100,000 a year ballpark for a street maintenance fund that can only exclusively be spent on street maintenance operations. fund that can only exclusively be spent on street maintenance operations. So, these dollars cannot be transferred to general fund or expended anywhere else. It's a restricted fund that must be expended in accordance with state law on what the fund is purposed for.
And it's for the City of Everman, not Tarrant County?
Correct. It is for the City of Everman, not Tarrant County. However, that being said, the funds can be and have been used in conjunction with memorandums of understanding and ILAs where Tarrant County may have conducted the work, but the work is in the City of Everman. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Would you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, item H, Resolution Number 2025-02-01, a resolution of the city council of the City of Everman, Texas, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Everman and the Everman Independent School District for the provision of police services, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and providing an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-02-01 as read. Second.
Who's the second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, this is for eight full-time police officers, five days a week during school year, correct? How many officers do we have on the street during that time?
During, okay, so this is, this is an agreement with the school district for us to provide eight school resource officers to them, so they fund these positions. We have a total of 25 positions in the police department altogether. Eight positions within patrol, two positions within CID, two positions within administration, one code enforcement, eight positions within school resource. Essentially, this agreement funds the eight positions within school resource.
No, I'm saying, I know, but I'm saying, so during the week, when these eight are at the schools, how many are patrolling the streets during the week, those five days a week?
Well, we have eight officers in patrol.
Okay.
In the patrol division, plus any detectives, administration, code enforcement, so we have several.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Would you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, item I, Resolution Number 2025-02-02, a resolution of the city council of the City of Everman, Texas, authorizing continued participation with the Steering Committee of Cities served by Encore, and authorizing and authorizing a payment of 11 cents per capita to the Steering Committee to fund regulatory and legal proceedings and activities related to Encore Electrical Delivery Company, LLC. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 2025-02-02 as read. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussions? Would you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, item J, Resolution Number 2025-02-03, a resolution of the city council of the City of Everman, Texas, approving a contract between the City of Everman Police Department and the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, authorizing the department to serve as a training provider, authorizing the police chief to execute said agreement and providing an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-02-03 as read. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Would you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Item K, actions concerning appointments to various boards, commissions, or committees. Do we have any nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate someone to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Her name is Peggy Mackey, and she's very interested. She will have her application into City Hall tomorrow. That means we only have one position to fill if she gets approved. I didn't actually, did I make a motion? I did not technically.
Make the motion.
There we go. Hold on, you make the motion. No, I'll make the motion. It's time to go home. I move that we approve Peggy Mackey to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, Board, Ward. A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
One second. Can you amend your motion to include an appointment expiration date of November 1st, 2027?
With an expiration date of November, 2027. November 1st, 2027.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Executive session, we have none. Oh, does anybody else have any appointments for the senior citizens? Okay. See? We're back to city manager's reports.
I don't, I don't have any to my mind.
Okay. And I don't even, so, time being 7:37, and we are adjourned.